Wonderful. My presentation is in the United States of America. It's to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God. In this law of liberty and justice.
Great, great. All right. The time is five thirty-two. It's June ninth, twenty twenty-five. I'll call this. For this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. We'll call please. Sylverson?
Here.
Just wait.
Here.
Just.
Here.
Just Gardner?
Here.
George?
Here.
Harper?
Here.
Frank. Great, thank you. Do we have any staff or board revisions to the agenda?
We do not.
Any board revisions? Okay. All right. We'll move on to public comment. Public comment, you're welcome if you're in person to come up to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Please introduce yourself. If you're online and you'd like to make a public comment, please click the raise hand button and we'll promote you to panelist. And you also will have three minutes. And we also have a public comment period at the end of our meeting. All right, go ahead. Anybody in person have a public comment?
Good evening. A couple of comments on the agenda. Later on, you have a resolution. Giving a raise, which I have nothing against a raise, but it seems pretty extraordinary. The average administrator pay in the state is under twelve thousand. You're at seventy-three percent increase on this one, it looks like, plus health benefits for spouses, which could create issues in the future. In your handbook, since that's not offered to other employees. Trash cans, please put them out. Without the bear adult proofing, that's going to hurt somebody. That's appreciated. I think that probably, oh. Certified local government, please vote no. There's going to be unintended consequences. It might be good for the government to get grants and stuff like that. But I think you're going to put a lot of regulation and onus on property owners that down the future, it'll be like, oh, we didn't see that coming. So it could impact getting insurance, stuff like that for the people that are chosen. So thirteen oh four Green Street would officially like to opt out. If that's a possibility. Thank you.
Great. Additional public comment? Yeah, go ahead. You guys are going to be on later for the ordinance. Well, we'll have a chance. We'll have a chance for you guys to present regarding organs. Yeah. Any other in-person public comment? It doesn't look like it. We'll now go to Zoom. If you have a comment on Zoom, we'll click the raise hand button and we'll promote you to panelist.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Melody Skinner. Paul, thank you for your comments. For the forty-five years, longer than the forty-five years I've lived here, this town has successfully fought certified local government. And what has changed is the town itself decided to push for it. And I want to reassure the citizens that listen to me, and I I'm gathering a crowd. That I have a commitment that if certified local government presents a problem to anybody in town, we'll put it on the ballot. And we can fix it. I do appreciate the work that you do as board members. I don't appreciate when something comes up that staff thought of and is working on that seems to take in no public opinion. And you guys are getting quite popular around the nation with your trash can thing. Good luck.
Thanks, Melody. Do we have additional public comment on Zoom? I don't see any. Do you have any other in-person public comment? Go ahead. Yeah.
I'm Sue Sanders. And I'm here to address the trash issue. I don't think that is a good idea at all. People are going to start leaving trash everywhere, for one thing. And this town depends on, excuse me, I'm out of breath. This town depends on tourism. And this is kind of like saying, we don't want you here or your trash. And I don't think this was thought out at all. Somebody thought, oh, this is a great idea. Well, it's not. Did you have you read all the comments on the Facebook page? People, a lot of people are up in arms, say they won't come back to Silverton. And I'm not in business. I've been in business and I know I know people are saying, well, I have to pay for my trash. They can pay for their trash. No. They are our bread and butter. We, this is a tourist. The town survives on tourism. And I wish it wasn't so. I would give anything to go back to the old days when there was mining because my dad worked at them, was a mechanic, worked at the mines and mills. And I love the community then. And but we can't go back. And I see that somebody cleaned up the mess across from the dumpster. Well, that's what's going to happen. Every day, people are going to go there and can't dump their trash. They're going to dump it wherever they could find. That's just, that's just who it is. I wish it wasn't so. Some people might be responsible and and pack it up and take it out. But you've got people that have children with dirty diapers. Do you think they're going to take those all the way back to Texas or New York or California? No way. I I wouldn't ride in a car with a dirty diaper for miles. We, it's a service that we need to re, to give the people. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment in person or on Zoom? Okay, thank you for your comments. We'll close public comment. We'll move on to consent agenda. Agenda item number four. Anything for the board or staff to call out in the consent agenda?
I know we do have our sales tax in there as well as our April actuals, since we didn't have a second meeting in May.
Comments or questions from the board on the sales tax or the actuals or anything else in the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we'll call please, Melina. Justy Harpersen?
Yes.
Just wait. Just.
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
And Crinker? Yes. Great. Okay, moving on to staff reports, agenda item number five.
It was requested that I share my screen for some of the staff reports, so I can.
I just was like, yeah, always look at the staff reports. We go, oh, so much, but we're the only ones looking at them. So I just thought it might be a good idea to share. I don't know, anyone? Don't have to linger on it long. A lot of meetings, Gloria. There's a lot going on in May.
Yeah, we missed one meeting, so it encompasses everything.
Yep. I just wanted to put a shout out for the one point seven million dollar N R D funding that we requested. Just thanks to staff and Gloria and everybody for pulling together for that, and we'll hope to hear later in the fall. A lot of trainings, the Land use code. Great.
Yeah, we have a realtor training on the land use code tomorrow at noon, from noon to two with local realtors, and that will also be available on YouTube for others to watch later.
Thanks. I just want to call it too on the grants, and I think it's just worth noting overall that, and we'll talk about this later when we talked about the contract, but Gori and team have brought in six million dollars of grants to this community over the last four years, which I think is pretty darn remarkable. So way to go. And we continue to see that on this list. So thank you. Like an entire town budget for us, like. It's like double our town budget. Yes, that's double our town budget for one year. So that takes a lot of staff capacity and staff work to not only write and pursue and find what might fit, but also to manage. So. Um, yeah. Any questions from the board of staff report comments? All right. Moving on to presentations and proclamations.
Today.
And moving on to business items. So we're going to have a public hearing for the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh nine. This is an ordinance of the town of Silverton, amending chapter seven, article eight of the Silverton Municipal Code regarding harassment and feeding of wildlife in accordance with Colorado Parks and Wildlife Regulations. So this is a public hearing. So the way it'll work is we'll hear from staff. We have some lovely citizen participants here that can answer questions or add to it. And then trustees can have the session and then we'll have public comment and then discussion and deliberation. So I'll kick it off to you, Gloria.
Sure. So we've been working on this all winter, actually, but in March, we met with the Wildlife Coalition, the Personnel and Ordinance Committee meeting, met with the Wildlife Coalition and discussed community wildlife protection ordinances. And the committee and the Wildlife Coalition members decided to start by amending our current code to create protections for wildlife. And we reviewed those in the next Personnel and Ordinance Committee meeting on the April seventeenth. And then have these changes before you. So there's three main changes. Um, well, kind of four. They, they kind of define each other. So the first one is the harassment of wildlife. And that is in addition to our cruelty to animals code. The second one is running at large to talk about a little bit more about no owner shall intentionally knowingly or recklessly allow a dog or a cat to harass wildlife. And so the attorney changed that one just a little bit. And to define harassment again in there. And then the third one is the feeding of wildlife prohibited. And so that includes bird feeders are allowed, but between April fifteenth and November fifteenth, all bird feeders must be suspended on a cable or other device. So they are inaccessible to bears and the area below the feeders must be kept free from accumulation of seeds and debris. So those were the big changes that we've proposed. And we do have our members of the Wildlife Coalition here if they wanted to speak to any of those.
Yeah, great. Thank you, guys. Oh, you guys can talk if you want. I wanted to provide kind of a quick summary too for anybody who's listening. So this kind of came out of a lot of problems we were having last summer with trash and then also with wildlife and then a tragic incident. And so what's really cool about this coalition is like a number of things came out of it. One was to provide bear resistant convenience scans around town. So that was a key thing that was requested. Improve or changing our code around harassment of wildlife, improving code enforcement related to trash management, refuse management, just overall code enforcement. And then improving education for residents and visitors. So this group took on really looking at our code and saying, okay, well, we want to have a little more teeth. We want to have a little more something in the code to be able to enforce, and that goes along with having more capacity for enforcement. So did you guys want to come up and add anything? You don't have to. You're welcome to. A great example of citizens policymaking.
My name is Westburg. I live here in town and as many of you know, I'm a wildlife photographer. Couple of things I wanted to mention. One is that these ordinance changes, which are trying, tried to do additions to the existing code were drawn from similar mountain towns in Colorado. So we didn't come up with this stuff out of the blue. We looked at other you know, what other towns had done on some of this stuff. I, many of you aware last year with the bear incident where a bear was unintentionally killed by a sheriff's deputy after kind of an unfortunate situation. And of course, as you were aware, last year, we had a lot of bears coming into town regularly, tipping over dumpsters and and going after trash and stuff like that. I've heard multiple reports this year already of bears in town already. And it's only June, so that's kind of unfortunate. So I'm concerned about, yeah, needing to change that their behavior in terms of coming into town. I do want to point out that while I care very much about the wildlife and a lot of people in town do. I know I would also argue this is very much about public safety. I'm sure many of you heard about a fairly recent incident in Yarra where a woman ran into a bear, I think behind the Beaumont and was attacked or injured. I don't know the exact extent of that. But it's my concern that if we just get used to accepting that, oh, bears will come into town because they're going to dumpster dive or whatever. No, that's just the way it is. There will be unfortunate incidents. And I do worry about, like, there was an incident when the bear hanging out at the old Myers Hospital in the afternoon, when kids are still running up and down the streets. You know, playing and doing stuff or whatever. So I just kind of wanted to make that clear or whatever in terms of where we came from on this. Trying to be reasonable, but you know, there's, there's kind of various facets why I think this is important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, community members. Call on Evan.
I'm Evan. I also live in town. I pretty much second everything Wes just said, and it's pretty abnormal to not have these things in our code right now across pretty much all mountain towns, but even like across Colorado. So it's just kind of bringing us up to, up to date and like I think we took the exact language from one of the Colorado Parks and Wildlife about harassing wildlife and what that definition is. And like Wes said, it's both protecting this space that we live in, that we have come into that wildlife has been in well before we were, and then also protecting people who now live here and being as symbiotic as we can. And making it not comfortable for bears and other wildlife and accessible attractants in the end protects the wildlife and people. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thanks, Evan. Great. Thanks, Coalition members. Um, we now, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up for public comments. So if anyone has a comment related to this ordinance in particular, please feel free to come to the podium or click the raise hand button on Zoom and we'll promote you to panelist. And again, you'll have if any comments on this ordinance presented today. Okay, we'll close public comment for this ordinance. We'll open up to trustee discussion deliberation. Any questions for the public, staff, discussion on the board? A question, I guess for Bevan. I mean, every time we have any regulation, there's a question about enforcement. So how is, what's that? Feeling like to you, does this seem reasonable to try to enforce the new ordinance?
Yeah, I, I think I'm noticing that being notified is an important aspect of this. So I mean, you know, I do rounds at this time of the year to inspect. I'm realizing that we're going to change some of the regulations around or requirements around storing like oil bottles and jugs and things that are typically outside of the containers that are put in the containers. Because it's, it's it's just part of the trash that the bears will get into. We can't do away with a scent, but we can address their access to it. And so that's a it's an issue because they take up a lot of room and I'm trying to be considerate of cognizant of restaurants, you know, limited space to begin with. But I think any steps that we take towards trying to minimize the one life interaction and their access to to the trash, I think will be beneficial.
Let me add to, like, another thing that came out of the coalition. So again, like I said, there were four main priorities. One was like, why do we have non bear resistant trash cans in town that the town's providing? So that was a top priority. So that led to the retrofitting of our existing beautiful you know, trash cans. We're working on the ones that might take out the finger, but if they're hard for humans, it means they're hard for bears. And we worked a lot with CPW to retrofit them. So these are kind of in line with what we're trying to do while we're also trying to protect our visitors. But the easier we make them, the easier it is for the bears to learn how to get in them. So the first piece was trash cans. And we decided to do that in-house instead of go for the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Grant to buy trash cans in town because we have these beautiful trash cans that we've had for a long time. And so thinking that we didn't necessarily need funding for bear resistant trash cans, we then decided to apply for that funding for more code enforcement. So I don't know, Gloria, if you want to talk a little bit about that, but kind of to Lindsay's point around code enforcement. We said, well, if we can do the trash cans in-house and not spend the grant on that, then we could maybe keep aside some more funding for code enforcement. So did you want to?
Yeah, so the CPW grant did include a code enforcement officer. And so we're hoping that that comes through and we're hoping that that would be a sustainable position moving forward. If we can just fund it all at once and then fines and fees will hopefully help supplement that part-time position. We're also coupling that with another grant that we have out at the transfer station. And potentially creating one position out of those two grants to help manage our trash and our code enforcement. So fingers crossed on all of that. And then we, we have a lot of, of trash grants too. So I'm hoping that we solve this this summer with outside funding.
Great. And I think from the coalition, also that's how the text to report thing kind of came up is again, if this is not an urgent, like, hey, the bear is really causing problems. You should call the sheriff or CPW or Bevan or whoever. But like, hey, there's an overturned dumpster. There's a issue. I mean, like that also came out as a way for people to more quickly kind of report code violations. It could be addressed, not just from Bevan's desk.
Yeah, I mean, I want people to understand the process of securing, you know, the trash and I don't want it to be. I, I think it just, it's habitual. I think learning to if you're chaining it up, you're not can't secure it, make sure it's secure. And that's, that takes time. It's like any learned habit. Remembering to do that and, and I'm taking that into consideration. I think having the, the trash bins secure and they're going to be scared to the ground eventually. That's all going to play a part in helping the more we reduce the amount of access, the less likely the bears are to come back for it. Because they're not getting the wind they want.
And the ones that are hard to open, we are working on a solution for those, right?
The Yeah, so some of them, the weights are too heavy, so it's slamming back pretty fast. So we're trying to work on reducing the weight of the of how it comes back. And then CPW didn't said not to do any handles, but we're, we're exploring something that maybe you can pinch and pull. So yeah, kind of inventing our own wild resistant trash cans as we go.
Because if we got rid of all the historic ones and everybody demanded us to.
Oh, that's great. And I don't know if bears pinch.
Yeah, yeah. And then the ones on Green Street, not including the Memorial Park, but they're the same amount that we've had last summer as well, correct?
Slightly reduced. We're not putting them directly in front of businesses that request them at this point.
Okay.
But we do have eighteen cans out there.
Eighteen cans.
With Clear, Green, Library, Shrine Hill, we still apply all of those.
And they're all, all bear resistant, yeah?
Um, yes, as we're rolling them out, they are bear resistant. So we're, we're not quite done retrofitting all of them yet, but we are rolling them out. As we do, they are all bear resistant. Hopefully.
That's awesome. Yeah, I just want to thank the Wildlife Coalition for spearheading this, bringing it to the Personnel and Ordinance Committee. I did think you're a little behind the ball with the ordinance of harassment and wildlife before this, along with bear resistant trash cans. So I'm really happy to see this move forward. I had a question for the Coalition and staff in terms of like penalties. Like, do we feel like the penalties are in line with what other communities are doing and kind of where we want to go? I mean, I know some people want, might want to slap a thousand dollar penalty or something, but like, do we feel like we're in line with what makes sense across communities? I mean, I think so for right now. I'm never for like going to the max. When we push out an ordinance to start, we can always reevaluate it, I think, as we move forward.
And we didn't change any of those right now. We just added to it.
Yeah.
But we didn't change it at this point.
Right. We didn't change the fees. We added to the kinds of things that could be.
Correct.
And or the kinds of things that are considered offenses. Other questions for the board, Carl or Jim? I want to make sure you guys don't feel like you're not included.
Thank you. Having worked on this along with the rest of the team, I, I'd really like to see an ongoing PSA to the public. Um, in addition to locking your dumpsters. to see an ongoing PSA to the public. In addition to locking your dumpsters, deterrence, like spraying the dumpsters and trash cans down with ammonia, bleach, Pine Sol, household items like that, that deter critters from getting into these, into these trash cans and causing problems. And I think that's just a simple way to continue the effort.
We haven't been very successful with our PSAs, but we'll try.
Touche Gloria.
Big squirt bottle, I don't know.
Um, I, from the Wildlife Coalition perspective, so we had a meeting in May. I'm going to write kind of a summary article for the paper, just letting the larger public know, like, what have we been working on? What's come out of it? So if people are reading the paper, they can have that. And then I also know we're running an educational ad in partnership with the local membership.
We have a grant in for that, yeah.
If we get the grant.
When we get the grant, we'll be writing, we'll be having an educational ad in the newspaper to help remind visitors and residents, like, some of these things. But I think that's a great idea, Jim. We could add that. I can add that to my tips and tricks at the end of the article. You know, this is like related to the ordinance, but I think in a future meeting, we'd love to hear like a present, like a report out of what all of the things the Wildlife Coalition is doing. I haven't been able to attend the meeting, so I don't know, general public would also be interested too.
Great. Is there any strong opposition to the ordinance as presented or changes that want to be suggested? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 2025-09, an ordinance of the Town of Silverton, amending Chapter 7, Article 8 of the Silverton Municipal Code regarding the harassment and feeding of wildlife in accordance with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Regulations.
Justie Harverson?
Yes.
Justie Wakefield? Justie Schnitzer?
Yes.
Justie Gardner?
Yes.
Justie George?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you. Thank you, Coalition members. We'll be in touch. Thanks for all your work. Thanks, staff. All right, we're moving on to Agenda Item 7B, a public hearing. This is the second reading for adoption of Ordinance 2025-05, an ordinance of the Town of Silverton, amending Chapter 7, Article 2, Section 17, subsection B and C of the Silverton Municipal Code, repealing the exemption for qualified employees and restrictions for campers for qualified workforce. Take it away Gloria.
All right. So since the adoption of the revised workforce housing regulations in Ordinance 2025-04, incorporated in Chapter 15 Land Use Code, Chapter 7 needs to be revised since it is redundant and no longer applicable. So this is a housekeeping ordinance that takes away the redundant information that's in Chapter 7.
Great, thanks. And again, just for the public, you can get more information about the seasonal workforce housing ordinance on the town website. And you could still occupy a camper within the town visiting friends and family for a total of 20 camper days on private property. So that is separate from the workforce housing RV camper ordinance. Again, this is housekeeping to make sure our code is all saying the accurate thing in the right place.
We'll open up public comment?
Oh, right. Yes, thank you. It's public hearing. This is the second reading. Thank you, staff, for introductions. Do we have any public comment on this ordinance change? And again, if you're on Zoom, you can click the raise hand button and make a comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do trustees have any additional discussion on this item? Great. All right, I entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-5, an ordinance for the Town of Silverton, amending Chapter 7, Article 2, Section 17, subsection B and C of the Silverton Municipal Code, repealing the exemption for qualified employees and restrictions for campers for qualified workforce.
So moved.
Second. Great. Roll call, please.
Justie Harverson?
Yes.
Justie Wakefield?
Yes.
Justie Schnitzer?
Yes.
Yes.
Which?
Yes.
Or Tim Harper?
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you. We have a number of these that are very much housekeeping, so we'll keep it moving. The next one is a public hearing for a second reading for adoption of ordinance 2025-06, an ordinance of the Town of Silverton, amending Section 2-2-70 of the Silverton Municipal Code to establish a new start time for regular meetings of the Board of Trustees. Take it away Gloria.
All right. So we discussed the change of the regular meeting time from seven o'clock to 5:30. Today is our first 5:30 meeting, and that was approved in a resolution. And this is the ordinance that would then put this in our code. So this is the second reading for this ordinance.
Thank you. We'll now open it up to public comment for this ordinance change. Do we have any public comment about this change? Right, I don't see any on Zoom or in person, so we'll close public comment. So just a reminder for the public, the intention behind this is to try to help with public engagement. The people, if there's agenda items that they care about that's later in the agenda, you're not here till nine or 10 o'clock at night. I think it can help staff. And we also changed the order of our agenda to try to help with that, to put up the public hearings earlier so people can come for the earlier part of meetings. So. I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-06, an ordinance of the Town of Silverton, amending Section 2-2-70 of the Silverton Municipal Code to establish a new start time for regular meetings of the Board of Trustees.
Second.
Great, roll call, please.
Justie Harverson?
Yes.
Justie Wakefield?
Yes.
Justie Schnitzer?
Yes.
Justie Gardner?
Yes.
Justie George?
Yes.
Or Tim Harper?
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you. The next one is a public heating, hearing, in a similar vein, second reading for adoption of ordinance 2025-07, an ordinance of the Town of Silverton, repealing and replacing Section 2-2-11, Order of Business of the Silverton Municipal Code to establish a new order of business. Take it away Gloria.
All right. So this was discussed as well, and we implemented this in May through the Resolution 2025-08. And the intent was that we could have the public hearings first and the second readings, like the first and second readings in the business item, so that all of the hearings would be heard first, and we didn't have to put that on continued business. And then some other tweaks to it is now you have an open discussion portion, so that if you wanted staff to respond to any kind of public comment that happened, or just kind of open for you guys instead of the trustee updates. So you can use that as trustee updates, you can use that in a variety of ways. So making it a little bit more flexible and hopefully a little bit more responsive in real time.
I'll now open it up for public comment on this agenda item. Do we have any public comment on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any trustee discussion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-07, an ordinance of the Town of Silverton, repealing and replacing Section 2-2-110, Order of Business of the Silverton Municipal Code to establish a new order of business.
Second. One more quick enough, I heard you.
Roll call.
Yes.
Justie Wakefield?
Yes.
Yes.
Justie Gardner?
Yes.
Justie George?
Yes.
Or Tim Harper?
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you. All right, another second reading. This is the second reading for the adoption of ordinance 2025-08. This is an ordinance creating an improvement district in the Town of Silverton, County of San Juan, Colorado, to be known as the Town of Silverton 8th and Bluff Special Improvement District, and providing for the method of payment of special assessment. Again, take it away Clayton or Gloria. I think Clay is on this.
Yeah, I will defer to Clayton on this.
Thanks Clayton.
Hey, guys. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I have to skip ahead to the, what page, if you could.
86 of the packets.
86?
Yeah, 86.
Thank you. Okay, I don't really want to belabor the point. I think we talked about this previously. The board passed this on a first hearing or a first reading. This is the second reading. We're all familiar with the legislative process here. So barring any questions you have regarding the formation of the Special Improvement District, this is your second reading, and this is something that has to be done if you are wanting to continue down the path of formation of the SID, pending your questions.
Thanks Clayton. We'll now open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment on this second reading or this Special Improvement District ordinance? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any additional trustee questions? Comments from the last, from the first reading?
I think we covered a lot in the first reading.
Hey. Well, the motion is on 86, if anybody feels so moved. I move that we adopt ordinance 2025-08, forming the 8th and Bluff Special Improvement District as presented.
Second.
Great, thanks. We have first and second. Roll call, please, Melina?
Justie Harverson?
Yes.
Justie Wakefield?
Yes.
Yes.
Justie Gardner?
Yes.
Justie George?
Yes.
Or Tim Harper?
Yes.
Yes. Hey, great. Thank you, guys. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 7F, Resolution 2025-13. This is a resolution of the Town of Silverton to amend the equivalent to residential rates or EQR for water and sewer rates, defining the EQR multiplier for auxiliary dwelling units or ADUs in vacant land. And this is just resolution, so not a public hearing, correct Gloria?
Uh, yes.
All right, so I'll pass it to you.
Thank you, sorry.
Sorry, we're on page 106. I know we're very quickly.
All good.
Send your comments to me.
Kind of go backwards here. We can promote Steve. So let's see, I'll start at the May 5th trustee. I could go way back, but I'll start at the May 5th trustee work session. Staff presented issues that have arisen with the implementation of the EQR rates for water and sewer. And from that work session, staff was directed to address kind of defining ADUs for EQRs and vacant land. We also discussed the square footage calculations of EQRs, but didn't come to an agreement on that and asked that our utility committee take that on. So I'm still trying to nail down a date where everyone's available for the utility committee for that item. But in this resolution, we do define the ADUs for EQRs. And we use the definition of the ADU in the Land Use Code to keep it consistent. And we did a .5 EQR for an ADU, and then a .5 EQR for plant investment for an ADU. And then for vacant land, we reduced the EQR rate of .5 shall be applied until the building permit is pulled or a period of 24 months have elapsed. So those are the two presented in this EQR. Other issues that were brought up are outlined in the agenda memo, and happy to take any questions on this.
Thanks Gloria. I would just say to those listening and those in the audience, like, I think this is a great example of where we heard feedback from the community and we responded. I think this board has been pretty thoughtful. We've had a variety of things to work through. We all know there are issues with our water and sewer and the fact that there's like 800 ratepayers and we host 700 people a year. And we have varieties of ways that our infrastructure needs improvements and our meters aren't working. And so I think this is a great example of people speaking up, raising issues, you know, talking through how this was being implemented, and then the board being able to make some changes. I know it's not always to the satisfaction of all the users, but I think this is a great step. I think there are some important bullets here that I would really hope that we would address. So I think the administrative fee, I think lining our trash EQRs with our water and sewer. So for example, like, if Airbnb is a part of a higher trash EQR, probably it makes sense for water and sewer. You know, you, you're probably having more people in an Airbnb than you're having in a single family home for various nights. So I think that could be something we can talk about. Yeah, so questions for Steve or for Gloria on what's presented? And/or do any board members want to really point at any of those bullet points that we should make sure we address in future discussions?
The July date didn't work for everyone.
No, still working on a date.
I just know like, you know, it takes, I know pace of government is a little slow, but we are, you know, it is hitting people's billing cycle. So.
We'll try and get that soon. The benefit of having it in July is that we will have our new Public Works Director here as well as Steve, so we have more minds to think through this.
Yeah. And again, for anybody that missed that May meeting, the intention was that we could evaluate, reevaluate not using square footage as a, as a way to bill EQRs for certain businesses because square footage doesn't really directly correlate to water use. And so making sure we have something that's a little bit more consistent and fair. But again, we want to apply it fairly and thoughtfully, and that is taking some time. So any questions on the resolution as presented, as far as the ADUs and the vacant land? Maybe we can address that and then talk about any other bullet points.
Spent a lot of time talking about it at the May meeting.
Yeah.
So I feel we're in a good place for these specific EQRs. And I'm going to need to address the other questions.
Great.
Great.
Jim or Carl, did you guys have any issues with the resolution regarding the ADU and the vacant land as presented?
I think we've done a great job on this one. And as far as the meeting goes, I want to, I personally would like to hold off until we have Johnny Z on board, so that we can get a better understanding of that path forward and what that looks like. Other than that, I think it was great. We need to move forward.
Thanks, Jim. And maybe a recommendation I would make to the board, because I think all these points are very valid, the bullet points, is maybe the administrative fee, we can have that discussion as we go into budget season. And some of these others, to me, relate to kind of the utility committee and a new public works director. And so maybe we say, hey, like, can you guys all talk about this as you move forward and kind of tease out the ones that seem to need to rise to the top? Does that feel like it make, does that make sense for, from a staff perspective?
All right, well, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-13, a resolution for the Town of Silverton to amend the equivalent to a residential rates, EQR for water and sewer, define the EQR multiplier for auxiliary dwelling units, ADUs, and vacant land.
Second. Okay, roll call, please, Melina?
Justie Harverson?
Yes.
Justie Wakefield?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Justie Gardner?
Yes.
Justie George?
Yes.
Or Tim Harper?
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you, staff, for being responsive and making those changes. We're now move on to Agenda Item 7G, Resolution 2025-14, a resolution of the Town of Silverton, submitting an application for and requesting designation as a certified tenant. And I see we have Lucy. Lucy, I'll kick it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Okay, yes. So the Certified Local Government Program, or CLG, is a program that's overseen by the State Historic Preservation Office, or the SHPO. And the program seeks to encourage and expand local involvement in historic preservation activities. In the state of Colorado, there are over 60 certified local governments. And becoming a CLG provides a number of benefits to the town and its residents, including the CLG grant program. And this funding can go to development or redevelopment of historic buildings. Or municipalities can fund historic preservation initiatives, like a historic resource, resource survey. There's also the National Park Service Grants, state residential and commercial tax credit programs, education opportunities, and technical support for our staff. And over the past few years, the town has taken significant step towards CLG certification, including the adoption of our Historic Preservation Ordinance, which established our Historic Review Committee, as it used to be called, separate from the Planning Commission. And so through that, we established our Historic Preservation Committee, as we call it now, and the adoption of the new Land Use Code, which included. Um, and the adoption of the new land use code, which included historic design standards and created the local registry of historic buildings. So the town has already prioritized, um, taken a few steps to prioritize becoming a certified local government and has already implemented the key requirements. So really, the remaining step is just to hit send on the application. Um, and in order to do that, um, we have to pass a resolution applying for and requesting designation, um, submit the uh, certified local government um, agreement and submit the uh, certified local government status request form, all of which, um, these are all included in your packet tonight. Um, one of those um, requirements is the list of preservation program priorities. Um, and so in order to apply um, for the CLG status, the town needs to establish preservation program priorities. And so based on the CLG requirements and the town's master plan priorities, staff have identified um, a few preservation program goals that are included in your packet tonight, but um, are can absolutely be up for discussion. Um, and those are conducting a um, a survey of historic properties um, to get a better idea of our scope of um, what buildings are contributing to our historic district versus which are non-contributing. Uh, establishing a local registry of historic buildings, um, assisting property owners in navigating grant and tax initiatives, um, or sorry, incentives for historic restoration. And this is included in the master plan, recognizing um, youth history that came from the master plan, maintain the historic character of the historic district, which also came from the master plan, um, and to incorporate art and historic interpretation to tell the story of Silverton's heritage and future as a mining railroad and mountain community along the Anamis River corridor. And that is an excerpt from the master plan as well. Um, so yeah, so really, we're just hitting send on the application by passing this resolution. But the town has already done a lot of work um, towards becoming a certified local government. Um, before I hand it over to you, though, I do want to note that we recently found out that um, proposed in the um, the twenty twenty-six federal budget are significant cuts to historic preservation funding. Um, and so this would impact the town and the community's ability um, to acquire funding for projects. But despite these funding, these potential funding reductions, staff is still bringing this to you all because we've, you know, we've repeatedly, repeatedly prioritized becoming a certified local government. Um, we've already accomplished most of the heavy lifting. And right now, we are seeing um, federal funding cuts that have already impacted, um, have already impacted us and will continue to impact our town's ability to accomplish um, projects. Um, but really, by becoming a certified local government at this point, um, this will just provide us with resources in the future. Um, so the resolution and the full application are included in your packet. Um, and if there are no initial questions, then I'll hand it all over for you um, for discussion.
Thanks, Lucy. Um, and this is, again, this is a resolution. Yeah, okay. Um, okay, questions for Lucy or staff on CLG?
I guess I have a question. Um, I know you've been working on this for a few years, but why, why haven't we become one in the past or before?
Um, Gloria, feel free to hop in here, but really what we found is that it just hadn't been prioritized um, by board or by staff in the past.
And we have been down this route a couple of times to become a certified local government. Um, but, and then I, and I got this from Beveridge because she was definitely one that was a proponent of this. And she asked, um, you know, that they should prioritize this at some point. Um, and it hadn't, we never got through a survey. I think they were trying to do the survey first. Um, where we don't need to do the survey until after we become a certified local government. So, um, because then you're eligible for the funds to actually do the survey. So, um, that's, that's as much background as I've gotten on why we haven't.
Thank you.
But all of our neighboring communities are certified local governments. And who I've talked to have not, like, they recommend that we become that because then people are eligible, not just government, but everyone is eligible. And you don't have to be a part of our list. You, you don't have to, you don't have to be, you don't have to sign on at all.
If you were identified as a contributing property, you can still opt out.
Yes.
Oh, it doesn't, we're not, well, go ahead.
Lucy, do you want to explain that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to explain it. I think um, some people have um, kind of alluded to the local register of historic places. Um, and that is a, a process that someone needs to apply for. Um, so you would actually need to go through a formal public hearing process um, to be put on that list. So if there is a property owner um, that would not like to be on that list, all they have to do is not apply for it.
Thanks, Lucy. Can I ask kind of a clarifying question? So right now, in our land use code, we have the historic overlay district. And structures, if someone wants to modify something in that district or do an addition or put up a new structure, that's when kind of the historic preservation committee comes into play, and that's when kind of additional levels of review. But we basically apply that district with a pretty broad brush to all structures in that district. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's a great point, Dana. Um, right now, we do. Um, and that's, there is language in our code, though, that does differentiate between contributing and non-contributing properties. Um, and so there are less, um, the restrictions for non-contributing properties are not as much as contributing properties. However, because we're not a CLG and we haven't had a um, a survey of our historic buildings, we don't have a list of what's contributing versus what's not contributing. Um, and because of that, we have to treat all buildings as contributing until we get that done. So one of our priorities post land use code adoption was to become a CLG so we could have that survey done, so we could begin to differentiate and hopefully make that process for non-contributing property owners a little bit easier.
Right. So the benefits of becoming a CLG is that then we're not having a blunt instrument approach, putting some property owners or properties through a more stringent process than maybe they need to. Um, and then for those properties that are contributing or want to opt in, they have potentially access to additional funding for certain types of grants related to restoration or preservation. Those are the benefits, right? Um, and so when it comes to some of the downsides, I think some of the comments we've heard earlier are interesting or food for thought. And I have heard this, and I, you know, I think there are times when I'm very sensitive to times when environmental protection, parking and lighting and historic preservation gets used to minimize housing and growth. And so I'm, I am curious, what do we think some of the downsides are to CLG in terms of making renovations more expensive or putting people through certain hoops? I guess that's my question. I guess I would argue is right now, because we already have historic preservation, we prioritize, I mean, for good reason. We get a earful on this board about how important our historic properties are, how important historic preservation is. We have an amazing historic society who has, you know, worked really hard and brought in amazing amounts of money to this community to help preserve some of our most keystone places. So you kind of have both of these things, that protecting all things is sometimes expensive and we want to promote affordability throughout the community. So can you speak to any of the potential downsides that an individual property owner could face from your research and investigation and experience with becoming a CLG? Or Gloria, from you talking to other communities that have said, yeah, this has been great. Just give us a little more context on, there's a lot of pros. Are there any downsides?
Yeah, I think that that's a great point, and those are comments that we heard a lot during the land use code process. And so in order to address those, um, maybe I can just speak a little bit about what we've already done to address those comments. And that is, um, we have, um, we've removed the requirements for the architectural review overlay district, which encompassed all of Green Street. Um, so we reduced the area where a review is required. And we also reduced, um, or we created a, an administrative review process to significantly expedite um, certain uh, exterior renovations for buildings within the historic overlay district. Um, and we have, you know, made the process more cohesive um, for both administrator reviews and for historic preservation reviews. Um, so we've tried to address that through the land use code. Um, and so this CLG program um, really is just giving the town more resources um, towards something that we've, we've already implemented. And we've already, we've had in Silverton for a long time. We've had the historic overlay district for a long time. Um, and so through the land use code, we tried to make the process easier. And through becoming a certified local government, now we're trying to get resources for community, um, for community members to be able to go through this process and for town to have more resources to implement, um, you know, best practices for historic preservation. Um, so it is hard to think of a downside. Um, because, you know.
One, yeah, the one downside that I got from other communities was um, the impact on staff capacity. And so it is another program that we do have to run. Um, and we do have to, like, manage a committee and, and it's, it's just one more thing on, on a plate, basically. And so it's something that we've accepted through this process because that was what we were directed to do in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Um, but that, that was the only, the biggest downside that I heard was that um, it was a, a lot on staff.
Thanks. You would have to manage the grant programs too, right? Or?
No, not necessarily, but the inventory.
Okay.
Um, so that when we do the survey, we'll have to manage the survey.
So do you see another staff member hired for this, or do we have enough capacity internally?
So far, Lucy and I feel like we have the, the capacity internally to do this.
Yep.
And when I started here, we had a part-time planner, and now we have a full-time planner. So that's definitely increased our capacity.
If we adopt this resolution and we decide it's not working, can we opt out of it at a later date?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. That'd be a very simple process.
It looks like, I, I was reading about other communities that have done it, like Trinidad, use it to do a bunch of work on the historical buildings. Um, like Del Norte is in the program, Manitoba Springs, like, these are all places that have done like a bunch of just window restoration and little things that we wouldn't necessarily put money aside for, so.
I think when this was originally presented to the board, I was on it, I think Jim was there too. Like, you know, it just seemed like there were a lot of upsides because it just opens up more doors. And it is, it's kind of what we're already doing. We already have limitations around what you can and can't do on some of our historic structures and areas. And so it was a way to help provide some more capacity and funding to implement policies that had already been prioritized by the community. Um, again, some of that funding might be going away. Um, but if we're a CLG and we're, you know, this is something that we can implement now administratively, and then it could support property owners or people for a while. I think, again, I've just, you know, there was a horror story of a diner in Denver, right by our house, that couldn't be sold because neighbors had nominated it to this registry, and then they couldn't sell it because they couldn't renovate it. And like, those kinds of stories, but I think those are the exceptions. And as long as there are protections, we're like, if people, if people don't, if you buy in the historic district, there already are limitations around what you can and can't do. Um, but I think I don't want us to have buildings that, you know, put people in a bind on what they are and aren't able to do with their properties beyond what we already have in place. So if you're an individual property owner, you don't have to sign, like, opt in for this. Is that according to Lucy and Gloria? Gloria, Lucy, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, so again, what you guys are talking about is the local registry of historic buildings, which was adopted through the land use code update. Um, and so in order to be put on to that registry, you have to apply for it and you have to go through a public hearing process. Um, so you have to, you know, want to be on that registry, to be on that list. Um, you, there, there is an aspect of the registry where someone is allowed to nominate um, another building to that list, but the landowner is notified and, you know, can be, um, will be included in that process. And if they um, are against that, then that's something that we can address.
And when we're talking about a survey, we talked about that in terms of just surveying within the historic district which are contributing and non-contributing properties? Is that kind of the scope or would we be looking at the whole town limits?
Sorry, I think the, the computer has gotten a little buzzy. I, I didn't hear that.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay. When we're talking about the survey that would be one of our action items, is that a survey of properties in the historic district or in the town as a whole?
It's in the town as a whole.
Okay.
Is it, is it sounding funny, Lucy? Do we need to pause it for a sec?
Okay. Yeah.
Fine, just one sec.
Okay, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, that's better.
Better. Okay.
I think we had a little bit more public comment on this. Is, are, is the board open to taking?
Oh, additional public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
My son. I mean, so we have comments on how it affects government, property owners' potential. When you do this, insurance companies will be affected. People will be dropped. I've changed insurances twice in my twenty years of ownership. First thing they ask is if you have a little plaque on the front of your building. If you do, you're done. It's three, four times that. You're talking Lloyds of London type stuff to get insurance. It could be very impactful. And for all that it brings, you might get grant money, like, great positions, whatever. I can apply for all this if I ever want it. We actually looked at doing it when we first bought the pickle barrel to do a huge renovation of the building. But the strings attached were huge, and we just didn't want to do it. And the other thing is, I would definitely look at what it takes to go through all this and look at the National Park Services website. And I, they will force buildings to be on that list. So it's happened in other areas. And it would be, I mean, if you quadruple my insurance on top of all the other costs, I mean, this is some pretty huge inflation. So just make sure it does impact other people different ways too. And as you said, we've been protected. The Historical Society did a great job years ago. I mean, if I went to bulldoze my property, Bevin would be there with handcuffs pretty quick. Happened, so, you know.
Um, we did open up for in-person public comment. I see we have another public comment on Zoom, um, so I want to give equal opportunity.
Hey, this is Melody. I spent a few extraordinary hours when I should have been sleeping reading about the national historic um, and the parks, all the rules. Um, it can go as far as coming in your house and telling you that you can't replace your water heater or you can't replace your entire heating system. You can only replace minimal parts. And they can tell you what color you can change, paint anything inside as well as outside. This can really expand into something that the citizens here are not gonna like, unless you're the very few people that have wanted this since um, the historical society was created in the sixties. And um, even though one person may not think there's been opposition, there's been a lot of opposition. And um, every time something has come up, the citizens here have successfully fought it. And that's why I offered earlier, you don't like what's gonna happen if this is voted in, I'll put it on the ballot. You don't have to worry about it. And um, I think that this goes too far. I think that when um, I mean, at one time, members of the historical society wanted to choose exterior paint colors for the, for everybody in town, not just the business districts. And you give a little rope and people tend to hang themselves, and that's where it got to a point. So I'm not sure you really want to go down this, but it is not a truth that if you want to be exempted from it, you can automatically exempt yourself. If you're in a district with surrounded by buildings, you have to be in it. And um, I don't think you've got a lot of people that want to be forced to do any of this.
Thank you. All right, we'll close public comment on that. Um, Lucy or Gloria, did you guys have any clarifications or updates on this or things you've heard from other communities in their experiences?
I had not heard about insurance. I had not heard about insurance from other communities. So that's new, but I'd have to look into.
Thanks.
Yeah, I also, um, haven't heard about insurance. Um, but I will say that, um, being on. The local registry of historic buildings does not put you on to the national registry. Um, where they may, you know, have a say in, um, certain aspects of exterior renovations. Whereas, you know, we have our own regulations on that, um, which are in the land use code and, um, are already in effect. And we're have, you know, we're already implementing that. Um. So, yeah, that is one thing I would say. And, um, while, you know. Uh, buildings can be put on the local registry of historic buildings. Um. There was one point brought up that, you know, buildings in the historic overlay district can't opt out and that is, that's true. You can. Put yourself on the local registry of historic buildings, but you cannot opt out of the historical overlay district.
Right. In our land use code. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. It's a, it's a zoning limitation from, per our land use code. Yep. Um, I think in general, I think from what, this, this has been a long discussion. We've had multiple presentations on this. So this isn't super new discussion. I know for the newer board, it might be, um, I think this has been a lot of time and effort into moving down this route. We established a whole new committee for it. Um. I'm in favor of moving forward, but I think in the same way that we've done with a lot of policies with implemented, whether it's the land use code or EQRs or RV ordinance is like. We expect staff to check back in with us. Like if you're working with applicants and seeing things seem to be going awry, or I mean, I think you. Hear the intent of the board. You know how community members experience this. Um, and so just checking back in with us of like. How is this going for people, for property owners, for residents? Um, that would be my request. And I think that's something that. Is already an aspect of the staff.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll just say to that point that, you know, we've already implemented, you know, all of these aspects into the land use code. And so. I will make a note and we can absolutely revisit this topic when we revisit all of the aspects of the land use code that, um, where issues have come up. Um, so I'll put that on the list to revisit in the fall. Um, but again, the certified local government application is really just, um, to get resources to help us do what we're already doing.
Thanks Lucy. Uh, Jim and Carl, you guys didn't get a chance to speak. Jim, you have a lot of experience with historic buildings.
I do. And I have mixed feelings on this. Um. It, it can be draconian at times with the, uh, requests that are asked. With, uh, big government designations comes big government strings. And, uh, for the first three years of the Grand Imperial, while renovating that, I opted out of everything. I, I kept them. As far away as I could, further than arm's length until, uh, we were done. Because what they wanted was something that was just totally unbelievable with, uh, the rules and regulations and, uh, color patterns. Uh, that's all real. The insurance aspect, all real. Um. I, I am in favor of this, uh, for lots of reasons, but I also think we need to proceed with caution. And this is one of those where pumping the brakes and keeping it in first or second gear is probably the best way to proceed. Because it, it can, it can get out of hand pretty quick. And yes, there's a big upside, but there's also a downside. And I just, uh, I think folks need to be, uh, fully aware and fully understanding before we dive into the deep end.
Thanks, Jim. Really helpful.
Wait, Jim, can I ask you a question that so would that be like just waiting to do the survey or waiting to see which buildings would want to opt in?
Oh, if, if you're asking me my opinion right now and how I'm going to vote, I, I would vote yes on this because I do think there is a big upside to it. And I do believe that we can take advantage of these programs while there's still some money there. Um, what I do need us to just. Take heed and be cautious about are the fact that there are always going to be pitfalls and strings. Um, from the overlords that are giving us this money, uh, and, and telling us what we can and cannot do. Uh, other than that, I, like I said, I will be voting yes. I do think this is good. Um. The grant is on the historic registry. We have taken advantage. Uh, several years after the remediation process was over, we did take advantage and, um, I was the recipient of the 2018. Uh, History Colorado Award for Historic Preservation. I do think this is a good, uh, a program. But I just think we all need to be very cognizant of, of where it can go. Other than that, I think it's great. And I will vote for it. I will vote for this.
Thanks.
Question.
I hear an administration to proceed with caution. You're kind of sort of like, well, what does that look like?
Yeah. That, that was like my, what does that look like? I mean, I think there's, it sounds like there isn't really funding anymore, like less and less funding, right? I mean, reconciliation will happen next few months. So I imagine that'll want to dry up. Um, so I. You know, like this, we could, we could pass it tonight and not really like do anything with it necessarily until there's funding, especially the insurance piece to see how that. Settles out for different building owners.
And again, per Ron's question earlier, if it's not working, we can opt out, like we can.
Yeah.
Uh huh. Yeah.
But I, I do want to just quickly say I do commend Lucy and the rest of the team for all the legwork because it is, this is an arduous process. It is long, it's painstaking. It, it just, there's nothing fun about it. But once you get there, you get to have a sip of champagne.
In your historic building.
Anyone's historic building. After the designation.
Carl, did you have anything to add? I want to make sure you feel like you can jump in.
Thanks. Yeah, I don't have anything substantial to contribute. I just think that, um, I appreciate that this discussion is. Weighing the pros and cons. I, I'm also totally in support. And I think it's a tough, it's tough to say, oh, we're going to exercise caution without really knowing exactly what we're being cautious of. But I think we just have to be really aware that we're going to need to guide the community, um, through any. Through any process like this and. You know, I, I do think there's opportunity here and I'm happy to support it.
And I think that, well, go ahead Amy.
I mean, yeah, I, I personally. Support this. I do understand though, there will be impacts to the public. Uh, i- is there any option for a ballot vote or is that just out of the question here?
I mean, I think something to consider, I mean, obviously citizens are always welcome to. Put something on a petition and have a vote. Um, you know, from a historic perspective, ha ha, unintended, um. You know, this becoming a certified local government was prioritized by the previous board. Like we gave the March of Martyrs the staff to work on this. There, some of these same conversations came up. I mean, it wasn't just like totally straightforward, rah rah rah, this is going to be great. There's, there's upsides and downsides, but. This was prioritized by the previous board. We've been working towards it through the land use code, right? The land use code was updated with all of the historic preservation components with the historic preservation committee. I mean, we purposely. Because the planning commission used to serve as the historic preservation committee and we purposely like separated that out, created its own committee, like. Gloria mentioned 2021 or 2022. I mean, this, I probably 22 because I think I was on the board. Um. You know, we've been taking steps and staff capacity to move forward in this direction with this intention for a while. It doesn't mean you should change course, right? If, if all of a sudden you think, oh, wait a minute, this isn't a top priority. You know, there is an aspect of kind of sunk cost. You've already invested some stuff in it, but you could also just say, well, we've already invested that time. If it's not the right thing, we shouldn't move forward. But I do think it's important for all of us to remember, this was kind of always the intention and prioritization. And we set up a committee for it. The land use code is set up to do this. Um. And so I would just caution us. To shift focus to completely without some real consideration. And I'm not discounting any of the concerns at all. It sounds to me from staff perspective, who've been involved in this for a while. That there are options to have some guardrails and to reevaluate in or to proceed with caution, as Jim said. So. That would just be my pitch to the community and or to the town, to the staff, to all of us is like. You know, this is kind of something we've been working on for a while. Do we have some really good reasons why we shouldn't proceed in this direction? Or do we think we can proceed with caution effectively?
Also, can I add? Just, I agree with you. And I think there's been a lot of like, not. Misinformation, but just like maybe a misunderstanding of the program from what I'm hearing and like a lack of clarity. And so I think. Uh, again, like this board has done a good job at being like, let's see how this works and then reevaluate if we need to.
Mm hmm. Um, Lucy, did you have anything to add there in terms of kind of where we've been moving or how you see this playing out in the community? Or you, you've heard a lot of the concerns and the proceed with caution. And so do you and Gloria feel. Like we're able to honor that sentiment that's been expressed by the community and the board to proceed with caution?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think you guys hit a lot of key points just now. Um, you know, especially that we. We already have a historic preservation committee. We already have all of these standards in our land use code. These processes are already in place. Um, and so by, you know, as I've been saying, hitting send on this application. Nothing will change in the way that we're implementing our land use code and the processes that we have, you know, once we do this. Um, this will really just bring in resources, um, for our community.
Thanks. Any additional questions or comments from the board or wanting to make certain conditions? Like proceed with caution. I don't think that's a condition, but that was a, that was a sentiment, um, as we move on from this topic.
Yeah. Can that just be staff direction? I mean, it doesn't need to be in a, in the motion.
That direction that you'll check in with us if. It's affecting people in particularly challenging ways.
Yes. And Lucy has it on her list for readdressing in the land use code as well. So we'll have a, a check in in the fall.
Right. Thanks. Options in front of us are to make a motion to approve. I don't think I've heard any conditions that anybody wants to particularly add. We can continue this, but I would kind of ask the board, okay, what more information do we really need? Um. Or to make a motion to deny. Those are your options in front of you. I mean, I'd probably rather see something like this go to a ballot, but if we do proceed with caution and we can reevaluate, then I'm okay with approving now.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025 dash 14, a resolution of the town of Silverton submitting an application for and requesting designation as a certified local government.
Second. Oh. Oh, Jim or Lindsay, pick whoever, Melina, roll call please. Yes. Robertson? Yes. Mr. Wakefield? Yes. Mr. Schnitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner? Yes. George?
Yes.
Tim Harper?
Yes.
Your Cringer? Yes. Hey, thanks for the good discussion. Thank you, public for the comments. Thank you, Lucy.
But with that long pause, I thought I was going to need historic preservation. Glad we got through that. Good job, guys.
Thanks. And thanks to the historic preservation committee. They've been working on this for a while too. Yeah, we didn't know that they, they supported the. Right. Yeah. They supported it. Yeah. Um, all right, moving on to agenda items seven, eight. This is a resolution 2025 dash 15, a resolution of the town of Silverton authorizing the town administrator to engage. McLeaney and company as financial advisors for the evaluation of funding and debt options for a new wastewater treatment plant.
All right. So with our $17 million, potentially more project for our wastewater treatment plant, um, we have been pursuing simultaneously two options. It's the USDA, um, and that's typically a loan grant like we received for our collection system project. Or the state revolving fund loan, um, which has an option for forgiveness. Now, they both have different parameters and interest rates and payoffs. And evaluating both of them, I reached out to my, uh, manager's listserv and said, okay, how did, how did you all do this? Like, how do you evaluate this? Because the higher loan amount might affect our rates. So I want to be really diligent in how I evaluate. Which funding option to go for. Um, so in that manager's listserv, they got back to me, um, with, you really need a financial advisor. To help see, uh, not 10 years, but 20 years out and what that looks like and how it will be impacting your citizens. Um, so I got a recommendation from David Harris, Gosef, currently undergoing a waste, huge wastewater plant. Treatment, um, collection system, a whole domain, basically. Um, and he really recommended, uh, McLeaney and company. Uh, Joey McLeaney, uh, presented to our finance committee, uh, and what I liked about them is they offered to do another rate study. Um, to double check the one that we had done, um, as well as work on. If we go with the USDA versus the state revolving fund loan and give me those options on what that looks like so that I can present it all to you. Um, but we are coming up at, with some deadlines. Uh, one is in February, uh, that for the state revolving fund. Um, so we are trying to anticipate those applications and what we need, which way we need to go with it. Um, McLeaney and company, they do not get paid until, uh, we have our bond secured. Um, so they get a portion of that and their, uh, rates are in here, but basically it gets rolled into the bond. Um, and I would recommend this just to have more help in trying to determine kind of the future of our community. Um, on our, our sewer rates. So I wanted, I wanted an outside perspective and I also want to double check the rate study that we have.
Thanks Gloria. Uh, the finance committee heard from McLeaney and company, and I think it made a lot of sense to us, or I'll speak for myself personally, because you two kind of speak for yourselves. Um, you know, this is a huge project and having Gloria tease out in a spreadsheet. The amortization schedule of this debt and what makes the most sense in terms of our rates and how likely we can get this forgiven versus this, like. You know, these percentages are really, when you're looking at multi-million dollar project, the type of financing that can be really significant to our community. So. Um, we thought it made, I thought it made a lot of sense to. Contact with an expert who we wouldn't have to pay upfront for, but would help give some advice on. Doing these types of projects. That was my perspective. And feel free, Jim or Tyler to jump in with your impression.
Yeah, it was, I was pretty impressed with their presentation as well. Um. Also, one thing to note, they only get paid for any loans. So. The more money we get through other grant resources, they don't get paid for that. So. Um, but they would also help us with any other, was my understanding, any other financing that we needed for other projects. Um, and they work for free until we get bonded for any of those. So. I mean, they must be very, very, um, sure of themselves and. I mean, um, yeah. Um, but it was a, it was for, for a project that could probably end up costing tens of millions of dollars. I think it's very smart to have somebody that can help us.
And I think knowing that they are working, currently working with another community, mountain community felt good. Like this was not just. An unsolicited bid or something. This was like, no, a recommendation from another community. It's helpful. Yeah. Jim, did you have anything to add on that from the finance committee perspective?
No, I felt the same. And I think this is a, um, these are a group of guys that we need. Financial advisors.
Yeah, they brought a whole team. So.
Oh, in person or? It's like father and son too.
Father and sons and cousins.
Sons and sons. Yeah. Wow.
Yeah. If he doesn't get paid, then his son will get paid.
That's called incentive.
Sounds like a great option. And, okay, so sorry, just for clarifications, the product that they would be delivering to us is that financial advice. That we would need to distribute the loan.
So it would be the advice on, do we do USDA or do we do state revolving fund?
Okay.
Um, we can't do both.
Right.
Um, unless they figure out a way we can. We can't do both unless they figure out a way we can. But the way I see is we need to, we need to choose which route we need to go.
Okay, so we would be able to like, they'd be able to do this in the next however many months.
Yeah, hopefully in the next month, as well as a rate study.
Yeah, cool.
They claim they can do one pretty quickly, so especially since we've already had one done, but I would love them to double check.
And I think if needed, you know, they can have, provide support with issuing bonds, like what we would need for this day of a project.
Yeah. Any questions about this service or concerns about contracting out for this or?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen, a resolution of the town of Silverton authorizing the town administrator to engage McLeaney and company as financial advisors for the evaluation of funding and debt options for a new wastewater treatment plant.
Second. Great, roll call please, Melina. Just the Robertson? Yes. Just to wait.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Herbert and Harper?
Yes.
Your cringer? Yes. Thank you. Thanks Gloria. All right, we're moving on to agenda item seven I, Resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen, a resolution of the town of Silverton approving an amendment to the town administrator's employment agreement to provide a salary adjustment and extend health benefits to spouse. So I'll kind of kick this off. So this kind of, I just kind of wanted to have a step back a little bit. So Gloria's been with us for four years, like this month? This week? Next week?
Last Friday.
Last Friday. And in that time, she's secured six million dollars in grants for our community, which are funding projects and priorities directly from the community's master plan. In her tenure, Gloria has cleaned up years of organizational instability from frequent turnover of town administrators. She's tackled multiple, I'm gonna embarrass you for a little bit, so you just have to tolerate it. She's tackled many deferred projects and issues to support a higher level of service to the community and our visitors. She's brought stability and transparency and she demands a high level of performance from herself and her staff. She is very respected by staff and the community and she provides strong leadership and mentorship. I just, I wanted to note a couple of things. Local and regional colleagues really hold her in high esteem. I go to a variety of regional working groups and everybody says nothing but really positive things about Gloria and her efforts. She recently won manager of the year award at the Colorado City and County Management Association and she received more nominations than anyone ever had. And those nominations were coming locally and regionally. And so she was recognized locally, she was recognized regionally. And she not only serves as our town administrator, but I think what a lot of people don't realize is many other towns have finance directors. They have HR staff, they have IT professionals, they have communications managers. And Gloria wears all those hats and those are usually jobs that, you know, are held by four different roles. Gloria has demonstrated her qualifications and capacity and she really could go to any other community and make tens of thousands of dollars more than she currently makes and probably work less. She might only have one job in that community instead of four. And so the board had noted that she had already been recruited by other communities who are recognizing her contributions. I think she's really stood out in the state and winning this recent award, I think further highlights that. And so our board, we had an executive session and it really came up, this desire to protect one of our most important assets. I think if you surveyed many people in the community, they would say Gloria has really done a lot of amazing things for this community. And I run into people that they may disagree with our policies, they may not like some law we passed, they may not like something we implemented. But very few folks have anything negative to say about our town administrator, because she manages things with grace, with persistence, she's a good listener. And at the end of the day, I think generally people assume she's trying to do the right thing for the community and she works really, really hard to do that. And so I think this board wanted to have a conversation about her compensation and how we kind of protect this important asset that we have. And so that's why the board is considering an amended contract that includes a proposed increase in salary and benefits to really acknowledge Gloria's contributions over the last four years. And I'll note that when I first joined the board, staff recruitment and retention was a key priority, because we've had so much turnover and just so much inability to forward big projects. Like, the things we hear complained about on Facebook or historically, they're all things that are hard to get traction with when you don't have strong leadership and people in place for a long enough time to get the work done. And so Gloria has been kind of bringing that stability to town hall. And I think she's really been a key driver for our ability to tackle tough and important projects and policy. Gloria's always been an advocate for her staff before herself. I note for the public that she deferred raises for herself until her staff had some different salary adjustments. And I I would just make the appeal that I think it's time to reward her leadership. And so we can talk today about what that looks like. Gloria and I have gone a little back and forth on this and chatting. I've looked at a variety of other communities and I appreciate the feedback we received earlier, but from my analysis, I was able to get data from the Colorado Municipal League. And what we have proposed here is is not far off from what other communities of our size do. And so there's a wide range and I realize lots of other communities have a variety of different tax bases and revenue options. But really, if we were to go and recruit for someone new, first of all, we'd have to spend tens of thousands of dollars just to recruit someone. And we probably would have to raise the salary level from what it is now to recruit anybody qualified. And so I think it behooves us to invest in the administrative, the exceptional administrator that we have now. And just reward, this isn't just a retention idea, but I think it's also recognizing the leadership and what you've brought for four years. So we can't compete directly with some of the communities who might be trying to recruit Gloria, but I think this is just really an effort to acknowledge the impact of leadership that you've brought. So for the board and community members that may ask how we can afford this, because I know we love to have budget discussions. And we've had a lot of them over the past year. So I would argue, and we can talk through some of the details. I would argue that we really can't afford not to make this investment. Because again, I think if we were to need to fill this role in the future, we would be looking at a similar level of investment. And we have really large housing and infrastructure projects in the works. And I think folks may not realize, like, when you don't have leadership in that, it's really hard to keep those projects moving. And losing someone like Gloria could set this town back multiple years and some of the big things that we're trying to work on. And I think when it comes to the twenty twenty five budget, we did budget conservatively. We really tightened up the budget to build up our reserves and to make sure we were investing in key priority projects. But I do think that we've improved our net revenue with our enterprise funds, so hopefully we won't have to transfer as much from the general fund there. And I think we did budget a little bit conservatively, that we can make the argument that this is an investment worth making. And I really think this is one of the most critical investments that the board could make. And I do think we have some flexibility in our budget to accommodate this contract. So that's kind of my, I didn't write a memo, that felt weird. But I just really wanted to publicly acknowledge Gloria. We've done your review before and all of that. But I just think it's super important to acknowledge in the community the contributions you've made. And, you know, if you brought six million dollars into this community over four years, this increase in salary is a very, very small reflection of those contributions. And again, I would say it's in line with other communities. So that opened it up to board discussion. If you have more questions on the budget, I think we could dive into that as well, but I just wanted to put some of those facts out there.
That was really well said, Dana. I completely agree with everything you're saying. And just to go back on the fact that if we did go higher out and try to recruit a new, you know, administrator, it would be even more than this, I would say. And again, we really can't afford to lose her, so anything we can do.
Agreed. Also, later in our packet, we have a letter from the Coleman's. And I just want to highlight again, the sign that really stood out to me was, we visited city hall, we were immediately warmly greeted by our town administrator Gloria. Instead of giving us the runaround, she was aware of her situation and beside, empathize, sorry, empathize with our plight. And she immediately assured us that she would be able to cover our initial plumbing fee from the plumber. And that is just such a clear, like, this community has challenges, there's drama on the internet. And Gloria is there always with kindness to answer questions and to help figure out problems to solutions. And you just can't, you can't always find that talent and compassion out there and it's it's worth every penny.
I thought it's worth making known for the public as well, this is not something Gloria has, this is not a number that Gloria has come to us with. This is the board recognizing her value and seeing her, seeing folks outside of Silverton talk about Gloria and it's our intention to say, hey, we'd love for you to stay. Obviously, we can handcuff you here, but this is not something Gloria is, you know, pushing or negotiating. It's really something that we've been trying to say, hey, we're recognizing your value. You're being noticed outside of this community. We'd love to at least demonstrate our appreciation. Can I see your afternoon? Did you have something you want to add?
I did. I wanted to thank everyone for that nice moment of silence for all that Gloria has accomplished in this short period of time. It's joke. But she has accomplished all this. And this isn't, this isn't about what everyone has recognized in other parts of the state, which they have. Out of all the counties, out of all municipalities in the entire state of Colorado, with the most votes in history, Gloria was able to garnish them all. That is no small feat for a town our size, for a county our size. But for someone who, this is, this is her first shot at this. And she has proven time and time again that no matter the obstacle, no matter what our little community has been able to throw at her, which is quite a lot for the size of our town. She's been able to not only weather the storm, but sail us through to clearer waters, to calm waters. This is an acknowledgement of everything that she's done, everything that she will do. We'd love to keep her for several more years and I think this is paving the way to that. It's not for anything else. This is what she's earned. Gloria has earned this. And Gloria, I thank you, along with everybody else in town. We all thank you.
You know?
Carl, Tyler. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I just don't, Melina.
Can I ask when this would go into effect if you do pass it just for record purposes?
I think the intention would be immediately. Is there any legal requirement that there's some sort of, I mean, it's a, it is a resolution. So administratively, whenever resolutions, isn't it effective the day of?
Either day of or unless you set.
Tomorrow.
Right when we pass it, yeah.
Tyler, Carl, Ron?
Good.
No, I I think I've said plenty of times, you know, the state that we were in when I arrived here was, I mean, I'm surprised that the town kept the doors open for eight years, so. And now it's not just keeping the doors open again, the projects that we've gotten done and especially with the affordable housing stuff, so. Also, I have friends in a lot of other communities that do similar jobs and we're still, you know, it's still maybe not enough, but it's what we can do. Obviously, we can't compete with everybody else, so. But yeah, no, I agree with everything that everybody has said.
This is about compensating Gloria fairly and it's also really about maintaining the momentum that we've built. And I think this is the right thing for our community.
Thanks, Carl. I think Jim said it best, you've earned it and I would say you're worth fighting for. And so again, like Tyler said, we can't compete with everybody out there. We never will. Because we're little, we're small, we're mighty, but we'd love to keep our unicorn for a little bit longer, so. Yeah, is there any substantive comments on the contract? Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Nope, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I apologize.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna talk about with regards to retroactive, is that this pay period immediately?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think it's up for the, how does it work administratively? What's the pay schedule? How can we?
Processing payroll tomorrow.
Figured that's why you asked.
Last two weeks, so that so I can make that adjustment tomorrow before payroll or I can wait until the next pay period. That is entirely up to your discretion.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
I'd like to make that adjustment immediately.
Great, the implication being for the previous pay period?
Yes.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for a while. We just couldn't get it on the agenda for a while.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there any substantive comments on the contract as presented? You know, Gloria, of course, asked if some of this could go to her staff. I said, we'll talk about that at budget season. This is for you. And I think the one thing to note in there too was a desire to have the payment for membership in the, I don't have it in front of me. Gloria, what is it called?
International Cities and Counties.
Right.
Manager.
Which was not a big line. That's just a request. So any board, any major board comments on the contract as presented? Okay, well, I would entertain any other comments online. You guys are good. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen, a resolution of the town of Silverton authorizing the town administrator, oh wait, sorry, twenty twenty five dash sixteen, a resolution of the town of Silverton approving an amendment to the town administrator's employment agreement to provide a salary adjustment and extend health benefits to spouse. Somewhere. Second. Great, thank you. Roll call please, Melina.
Just the Robertson?
Yes.
Just to wait. Just a Schnitzer?
Yes.
Yes. Just to George?
Yes.
Herbert and Harper?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes. Thank you, Gloria. You burned it. Thank you for your work.
Yeah.
All right. All right, moving on to agenda item A, discussion direction item, eighteen oh nine Snowden Street Sewer Backup Reimbursement Request Letter.
So there's a letter in your board packet requesting the pay out of pocket. I think it's two thousand dollars for sewer backup incident on eighteen oh nine Snowden Street. The town insurance SERSA denied the Coleman's claim since the town had been diligent about cleaning our sewer lines. Most municipalities clean their sewer lines every five years. We did it twice last year in preparation for our project this year. So they didn't feel like it was a valid claim. I did visit with Janie and Tom and I did agree with their, to cover their initial plumbing bill. It was eleven hundred dollars, since it was the inspection of the line and we would have done that any, we would have needed that anyways for the insurance, so I felt like that was a fair a fair compromise. We had a thousand dollar insurance deductible line I had budgeted, so it came out of that. And then their additional requests I did not agree to, so they are basically doing an appeal to the board for that additional request.
So is that for the, like, two thousand dollars and Home Depot and other supplies?
That's what I gathered. I thought it would be more when they were talking about it, but when I received this, it, all I could garner from that letter was the two thousand dollars.
That's what I was getting to. Understanding that the original valuation was twenty eight thousand to demolish it and then they hired carpenters and rebuilt, et cetera. So they've done some work on their own that they're looking for to reimburse.
Right, right. They did a lot of the work on their own.
And that'd be an additional two thousand dollars on top of thousand dollars that we've already.
Correct, yeah. Correct, and we did, we'd also waived their dump fee when they had to dump all their furniture. It was, it was pretty bad. It was, it was pretty bad.
Yeah, it sounds like.
The backup was pretty, pretty horrible.
Yeah.
I guess my question on this, and I just think, you know, this is so, this is why we're doing, it's not going to solve all of our problems, but this is why we're doing a sewer relining project right now. Like this is, it highlights some of our further needs for our wastewater and infrastructure needs. And so I think it's just really unfortunate when these kinds of things happen. I know just on our street, we had multiple houses that had damage from frozen water lines. I guess my one question, I don't know if you have an answer to it, is sort of like. Is there a way for the insurance companies to be really duking this out? I mean, I guess to me, in my mind, when I think of this, it seems to me that it comes to a place where the insurance companies kind of duke it out, really. They have homeowners insurance. We have town insurance. And if town insurance denied it, isn't that a point at which the homeowner's insurance would evaluate it? And if they have a denial letter from the town?
Yeah, and their insurance recommendation was to sue the town force.
That's in their letter. I know. That's their recommendation.
My favorite then.
And unfortunately, our, our insurance did deny it. And, and they had their grounds for denial. I included that letter in.
Were they advised to file a lawsuit against the town or against the town's insurance company?
Well, it would be.
It's.
Now by the town's insurance company.
Be similar to previous incidents.
Situations.
Yes, situations that we've dealt with.
Right, but it was denied by the insurance company because the town was not presumed to be at fault.
Correct.
Yeah, because of our sewer cleanup. Steve, I saw you come on there. Did you have anything you wanted to add in there? Are you just available?
No, it's funny. I was about to text Gloria an offer that I'm available. I know there's precedent. So I spoke with John Seitz. He said, step one is, you know, get a plumber. And if it comes back that it's on the town side, it's, there's precedent for reimbursing for that cost. So that's there. I think, you know, I was reassuring, hearing the insurance agent that I spoke with from SIRS. As far as our response time, they were kind of like hours. I mean, days is not out of the question for a lot of places. And that our diligent sewer maintenance and jetting. It is also interesting. It's a basement. Now, I don't know how much that necessarily impacts things. And you know, the sewer line's not overly deep. It was something I volunteered to the Gibson family in just recently, you know, you should know your sewer line is not very deep. So things to, that go through my head that I feel like are worth sharing.
Thanks, Steve. So your, your insight is that from talking with John Seitz, there is historic precedent that the town has covered some costs similar to this when the issue was on the town side.
Yes, that historically, he's told people, you know, get a plumber to investigate it. And that if the, the work done by the plumber and the camera, you know, if there's documentation that it is on the town side, then the bill has been reimbursed for the sewer services.
Thanks. And that work has been done, right? Right. So again, that's for the $1,100. Right. Right, right. See, that's for like the plumbing bill for inspecting it, not necessarily the remediation.
I can't speak to precedent on remediation.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah.
That's, but the scope, that scope was kind of what we're talking about. Okay, yeah.
The scope happened.
And we did.
We paid for it.
We paid for it. Right. That's what I'm saying. You paid for it, and it was found that the town was not at fault.
It's on the town. It is in the town's main. It was not in the property owner's. Yeah, tap, but it, but SIRS has denied it. Because of saying the town is not at fault.
Yeah, yeah. And that's after the plumber's evaluation of it?
Yes.
For an object in the sewer system. Okay.
What have we, what have we done in the past with these? Have we denied anything other than the initial claim?
You know, I haven't had one of these come up in my time here. And so that's why it's, yeah, I would rely on John Seitz for that historical data. And Steve, Steve talked with him on that. So I guess, Steve, do you have anything else to add about precedence that's?
No, I didn't ask the question of, you know, additional damages. And maybe he's not had this experience. So.
Maybe people had a homeowner's insurance sit.
Yeah, I'd have covered it.
It's really unfortunate.
I guess I would just say, I would be concerned about just the, if we decide to do it or not, just the number, how they got to that number. Like, what is, first of all, I think that homeowner's insurance should cover it, and they should probably, I don't know. That's tough. But also, if we did decide to go this way, like, well, understand the number could be a lot larger. And would that change how we feel about it? If they had submitted something that said, we want the town to give us $20,000. So I know, like, looking at that number, but at first I was like, oh, that doesn't seem too bad. But then I started thinking about, well, what, what does this set us up for?
Then it sets precedence for other things.
Yeah. Yeah, that was my biggest thing is like, I'm very sympathetic to this individual property owner's plight. Like, it's just, it sounds terrible. And it's also our job to sort of protect the interests of the town as a whole. And so what kind of precedent, well, while the intention is to be generous and $2,000 feels like, well, that, you know, we could figure that out.
But we also have community relations to deal with too.
Yeah. And what precedent is it? Well, we'll do $2,000 and below, but we won't do $5,000, but then we'll do 20,000. It just. The scope feels really reasonable and totally in line to me with what we've done and what makes sense, but I'm just struggling. And it is unfortunate that it's on the town's line. If I were this property owner, I'd be really frustrated too, because it wasn't even in my. It wasn't my fault, and it's not the town's fault, but it happened.
Yeah.
And so somebody still has to pay for it.
Like, fully unfortunate. Like the sudden letter, no one's to blame. It should happens.
Yeah.
I think I'm following Tyler that I would almost ask for like more detailed, like a, like a, not like a grant. You know, of like, what are you actually trying to get reimbursed for? Just like kind of more information there. So there can be some guidelines or that we could establish some sort of guidelines for these moving forward of what we're willing to support with and what we're not. I don't know. It seems like more work on them, but you know, you have a fiduciary responsibility here.
Yeah, it is. I think it's taking the temperature of the board on like, does, depending on what they presented, what's the sentiment of the board on paying anything or something, right? Before we ask them to do additional work or ask Gloria to do additional work. Yeah. And also Gloria put this on as kind of a discussion and direction item. So we had the option to say, hey, Gloria, we want this on the agenda. We want that, you know, she had them present a letter. We can invite them to be on the agenda. But I also do think it's not, I think, I would encourage the board to consider what type of action are we willing to take before we give direction to make this an agenda item and, you know, have them take time out of their evening and whatnot. What were you going to say, Ron?
I would say if they've got receipts for that $2,000, that I would be inclined to say, let's reimburse them for that amount.
By $2,000 or less? I don't know what you're going to say.
Oh, do we reimburse anybody for anything else? Because the, when the water line breaks, we're not really reimbursing them. We're just not billing them.
We'll forgive them, yes.
So what else do we reimburse for?
Good point. I mean, it's a precedent that we wished we wouldn't have too.
Yeah, right. Or what, if the, I mean, again, some, again, this is why we have insurance. Often, this is negotiated at the insurance level, not at the Board of Prestige level. I mean, that's the unfortunate thing. And that's also why we're in this seat, because Gloria administratively did what she felt like she could do. And it is perfectly reasonable for a citizen to appeal to this body. That's, to make those hard decisions that are not haircut. But I'm just, I'm thinking of a number of scenarios where how does it play out? Yeah, when a water line breaks and there's some flooding, but it's not determined to be anybody's fault. And there's damage or.
We've never, we've never reimbursed anybody for damages from a frozen water line, because I think that's not our fault, right? They're not in their house. Water line breaks, but we've forgiven a water bill, right? We're like, yeah, you sent 100,000 gallons of water to your house. You got enough problems.
I think typically though, the homeowner's insurance would cover water damage from. The, that's the problem right now is that no, no insurance.
Yeah.
Cover. Right. This is what insurance is for.
And they are.
Insurance companies, man.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm inclined to like hear the appeal. I think this is like very emotional. I almost got teared up because it's like so hard to read this. But I think more details of what we would be covering so that we're not setting a precedence of, oh, we, you know, reimbursed $2,000, some expenses, and now in the future, someone asks for 5,000 because they wanted the nice bleach. Like, I don't know. Just some more details or information about exactly what we're reimbursing and so that we can set clear guidelines. I agree with that too. I'm sorry.
It's tricky.
I'm like, we're, and we're not at fault. So why are we reimbursing?
But the other insurance is saying they're not at fault either. So it's, we're re, I feel like we're doing a good, like, it's like a, this, the, we're a community kindness.
Community gesture.
It's a gesture, yeah.
Judicial right and wrong. Who's it, it's not insurance companies making decisions. It's not a lawyer, no offense, Clayton, making decisions. It's a community making decisions. Clayton, I did have a question for you if you're there about just, do you have any caution or guidance for us as we kind of think about this issue?
Well, yeah, I think I want you to take a step like this. You are creating a precedent. And that's okay. I think the, the well-established policy here is that there are service lines that the town maintains, or excuse me, main lines and, and I think what, you know, they call them service lines that the town maintains. And then there's private lines that are considered to be the responsibility of the owner. Now in a town, I don't know exactly how the infrastructure is set up. It typically, you know, a water meter is placed at the sidewalk or location at which the service line comes into a resident or commercial building. And beyond that service or beyond that meter, it's considered the responsibility of the owner. It's not always so clean. Just keep in mind that whatever you're doing, you're, if we don't have written, if we don't have written policy or rules against it, you're basically creating that policy or rule at this point. You can always go back and, you know, change it, but you know, until we pass a law that says, you know, all, you know, all, all, all service lines of the towns and all line beyond, and I'm sorry to Stephen, I'm messing all of the infrastructure utility stuff up, but I think you're tracking what I'm saying. But then everything, you know, on the other side of the meter is the responsibility of the tenant or the owner. Until we do that, you know, this is going to be what it is going forward. Because we don't want to be inconsistent with the application of even an unwritten policy or rule.
Thank you. Jim, I see you're off mute. Did you want to add something?
I think this is a tough one. When I first read it, my first inclination was 2,000 bucks and a release to the town, done with it, and we move on. But I do agree with Clayton. I think we've been pretty good over the past several years about protecting ourselves and protecting ourselves from setting precedent and acknowledging that we're setting precedent. And this to me is one of those where we need to, I think we had an incident several years ago where we tried to do the good thing. We tried to do the right thing as a community, and we're still having to deal with that issue. I don't, I don't want to open up ourselves to any liabilities, any litigation. So this is a tough one for me. Like I said, my first inclination was just to write a $2,000 check and walk away, having them sign a release, saying, you know, thank you so much. Here you go, but you can't come back. Obviously, it's a board decision. But anything that we do tonight does set precedent. So whoever else has an issue down the road, Tyler's right. We have reimbursed, not essentially reimbursed, we've forgiven water bills for people that have had broken lines. This is a little bit different. So it's a tough one. And I also, but my, my second thought was, this is under the $5,000 limit. So why didn't someone just write a check? And this would have never had to come up in front of us.
I don't have a policy on this.
Exactly. And that's, and that's my point.
But I think that's again, why we have the administrator we do, is that it is fair, it is transparent. Gloria seeks the board direction.
That's why she's worth every penny.
Yeah. She made the appropriate administrative decision that had been done before for $1,100, and she said, okay, here's your option. You, she, you can appeal. Yeah. Carl, any other thoughts? Go ahead.
I asked for a lot more, and then I got the letter.
Yeah, I think the challenge the board is facing is to all of us, 2,000 feels very like this, that feels like the right thing to do. I think we're all sitting here saying, oh, $2,000, that feels like the right thing to do for these citizens. And we're in these seats where we have to think about precedent regardless of numbers. So I, I don't know. That's why we're in this tough position.
And I want to clarify, I need to clarify something. I apologize. So the main liners, the publicly owned lines that connect to, that bring the water to the residence or property. The service lines are considered the private lines that are typically on the other side of the meter and are the responsibility of the owner. And that's, you know, how more than, I mean, that's how a large majority, if not, you know, 90% plus of municipalities operate as far as policy goes for payment of utility or fixing every pair in a line, just so you're aware. And I was just confusing the nomenclature, so I just wanted to make sure I said the right words.
Thanks, Clayton. Yeah. And I think the issue we're facing is that the damage is inside a private residence, and the blockage occurred on the main line, but our insurance has determined that the blockage was not due to any negligence and is not the fault of the town because we did sewer cleanouts at more than regular intervals. So that's where we're stuck. That's where we're stuck. Yeah, Carl, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I feel very sympathetic for the homeowners dealing with this situation. And I wish it was as easy as just saying, yeah, we got you. I think that's the sentiment. But I do feel quite concerned about moving forward in a nebulous way. I think that if we decide we do want to pay this, we should be very clear about the parameters and set a precedent that has that specifies what we are and aren't willing to do. Because again, the number being small, I don't think should be the main consideration in this conversation.
Yeah, go ahead, Ben. I was just gonna make a suggestion. Go for it. I think of what I'm hearing is empathy for the situation, willingness to move forward, but a need for kind of some more parameters.
And structure.
And structure. So I think my suggestion is to ask, unfortunately, the Coleman's to come back with a more detailed proposal and request for funding. That will include potential receipts if they still have them. Um, and request for funding that will include potential receipts if they still have them. Line items, just more information um and guidelines. That we can, so being able to, for us to establish guidelines for what we would and would not approve um in the future.
And then what's the cap? Because if somebody comes back and they're like, I had to rebuild my house. Where do we?
I think I hear from the board a desire to say, okay, we think there's a monetary limit to this type of thing. Because again, in reality, this is the kind of thing that insurance companies should negotiate and duke out really. Or comes through the legal system, which again is sort of unfortunate. Um, so I hear a sentiment of sort of, the dollar amount does matter to a certain extent. I would ask the board, are we more interested? When we're thinking about a policy for potential, we may be, this may be a total one-off that never happens again. And so we can overthink this because this is a very thoughtful board. Um, so my question is, do we want some sort of policy that relates to like the type of reimbursement? We will reimbursement service, but we won't reimbursement, reimburse materials or we will reimburse anything up to a certain amount. Or we will reimburse, I mean, again, it's.
And then, yeah, I mean, do we have to, and this is overthinking it. Then you do, do you have to worry about proof and fraud in the future? Obviously, we know that this happened, but you know, I, these are things that it just sort of, it can snowball pretty quickly. So then should we just write a check and move on? I don't know.
Gloria, do you? Have input or any type of recommendation here? Knowing that it is kind of a policy challenge and it's a community challenge.
Yeah, and I'll be honest, like, I didn't know it was going to be two thousand, like, when they were talking about it, they were talking about having to go into bankruptcy. Um, so it was very emotional and um I, I said, you know, I, I can only approve this much. Um, and if you need anything else, you can appeal to the Board of Trustees. Um, so I do think some kind, if we do want to do reimbursements for these types of incidences. And, and like Tyler said, it's might, might not be that often. Um, but having some kind of guidelines around that would be helpful. Uh, if that's the route we want to go, or if it's something like. Administrative discretion up to this amount or something like that. And then I, and then you can come back to me on like, okay, what did they provide? What kind of, you know, what, what was the documentation? Like, I, I still would like to see a denial letter from their insurance, you know, with that proof there. But. Yeah, there's some kind of guidance on this one because I could use the five thousand dollar discretion all the time. But then if I did that every day, we would be way over five thousand dollars.
They haven't sent a denial yet to you?
If these are rare enough, I guess the future boards could just review everyone.
Are you turned out? Is that what you're saying?
I also wanted to come and present to you all, which I thought might be an awkward situation. So wanted you all to kind of evaluate this and if there's any other information that you might need, I can go back to them. And if you'd like them here in person there or on Zoom, they're definitely willing to do that.
I think this was the right process.
Okay, so I hear the board saying, we'd really like to write a two thousand dollar check. And but we feel like we need a policy and so therefore we're not comfortable writing a two thousand dollar check. Is that generally what I'm hearing? Okay, so would the board like to have Gloria present a policy? Or a few options? Or does, would the board like to have the Coleman's come and present? In, in that presentation, what would you like to have?
I think it is, would be best if the Coleman's were able to put together some information and work with Gloria on it versus presenting in public. Yeah, real emotional and, you know, I think. Like what exactly do you see reimbursed? The denial letter from their insurance?
Yep. Okay, so it sounds like direction of staff, not necessarily for a future agenda item, but to work with the Coleman's on some more details. And then we could get an update from Gloria in the future. I would lean toward the possibility for a policy approach that's like approval up to five thousand dollars at. At Gloria's discretion, but that the board is maybe updated on it. And then we're not coming up with a super comprehensive policy that's like, we reimburse services, but not materials. But like, I feel like that gets a little bit overkill for something when we're not gonna, we're never gonna reimburse thirty thousand dollars. We're gonna say, sorry, you gotta go talk to your insurance company. So. Um, what about the idea of Gloria working with the Coleman's on this issue in particular? And drafting a very loose policy? Or, or do we just give direction and say, Gloria, we're giving you a direction that on an issue like this, discretion is up to five thousand dollars. But the board wants to be like apprised of it.
Think the latter instead of like a, like a, something we have to adopt. So I think that actually creates like the policy and.
And then, I mean, there's no way that if we do pay for something that we're admitting in any way and they can come back for more, is there? I guess that's a question.
Had that too, yeah.
Right, well, we'd require, any sort of settlement like that would require, you know, a future liability waiver. Just have them sign the appropriate documentation that they waive all future claims.
So that would have to be included with anything that you.
Of course, yeah.
Great. That feel clear enough, Gloria?
Yes, so um. I have to go back on this one, but. Basically, you all agree that the policy would be that I would, I have discretion to prove up to five thousand dollars. Um, granted that I get, you know, I have some, some backing to that, whether that's receipts, the denial letter. Um, pictures, you know, have, have a case basically. And then I have them, and then once we negotiate that, then I have Clayton provide a liability waiver for them to sign. And then um. I'll work with the Coleman's directly on resolving this.
Great.
Does that sound like the section?
Once you have those things and now you have that, then it's possible to write. Good job, team. Okay. All right, moving on to again, item nine, ABA through G committee reports. Speaking of CLG, we had a historic preservation committee meeting. Um, I think Carl, you're our representative on that. Did you have an update you wanted to share or attend?
Um, yeah, I think we have discussed some of the same concerns and possibilities. About certified local government and um. Yeah, also had some conversations about changing meeting times in order to make sure that the public and members of the board can participate. Um, I believe a lot of the conversation has actually been reflected in our trustee meetings as well.
Thanks, thanks. All right, any questions on that, on the historic preservation mini meetings? Okay, library board meeting.
All right, rhubarb pies are gonna be back. Get your orders in. Um, there's my pitch there. Uh, we also had the third annual summer reading kickoff party. Um, so many people attended that they ran out of barbecue. It was, it was.
Oh, huge hit.
Um, and it's also Missy's favorite time, so. Uh, just huge shout out to what she's doing over there. And if you haven't been to the library lately, you should go.
Thanks, Gloria. Um, all right, finance committee. I think we mainly just, we reviewed actuals, but the main update was the financial advisor, so.
The mid lining.
Jim, did you have anything else to add from that? Great, thank you. Moving on. All right, we had a facilities, parks and recreation committee meeting. Amy, let us hear.
Yeah. We just got, you know, um, an overview of how the winter went. Different activities planned for the summer, um, staff duties and capacity. It seems like uh Mollus Lake and Kendall are being booked rapidly, which is great for us. And Parks, Parks and Rec is doing a whole lot for town. We discussed potential volunteer days for cleanup. Um, Kendall Trail Maintenance. And one thing that was discussed was that we need to get a new service break for lifting stall before next sea season. So that'd be a budget item.
Thanks, Carl. Did you have anything to add?
No, just that um seeing these high rates of bookings, even with increased rates, increased charges. Just supports that the town has a lot of really valuable assets. And we're so glad that we have a great Parks and Rec crew to take care of all of them. And we're continuing to prioritize taking care of our existing assets.
Thanks, Carl, yeah. And Gloria, is it fair to say Parks and Rec is down one headcount and then one seasonal staff?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. So just again, that team is working really hard and also be patient. Headcount is less than it was. Um, okay, Parks and Rec, thanks to that crew. Um, all right, San Juan Development Association Board Meeting.
Um, so the business summit that was held at the beginning of May was a huge success this year. We had about forty businesses attending. Um, Sarah facilitated a QuickBooks class as well and that we had ten participants. Um, and we are now discussing a new year rounder business program to promote businesses who are opened. Essentially year round, it's, it's mirroring the Euray um program that they do there. Um, and then we also discuss mockups from our Main Street grant for um the entrance signs. Um, so those will be coming and being presented to the BOCC, I think in their June twenty fifth meeting. Um, and then uh probably here, so. I, I know the BOCC had talked about funding it, so that's why it's going to um them first, but. That was our San Juan Development Association.
I think too, one thing I wanted to add from the business summit I attended, it was really great. Gloria attended. Um, a lot of new business owners. I know you see on Main Street, it's so exciting to see the doors open of businesses that had been doing renovations or fire damage. We have some new business owners in there. So just, I was walking Main Street the other day and just really grateful to see all the vibrancy. And the number of businesses open. Um, and something that really stood out to me, and I'll just echo this because it just is so remarkable. Um, Deanne with the Colorado, you know, she got data from the Colorado Tourism Office. And it's just really striking that we have cell phone data proof that there's seven or eight hundred of us here in this community hosting. Three million people, like three million people coming downtown, four million people if you count the county. And so I think when we talk about trash, we talk about water and sewer. We talk about just, you know, challenges with our infrastructure and our services and all that. We have to remember that, you know, these visitors are so critical to our economy. They're so critical to us all living here. Um, and it's a lot for seven or eight hundred people to kind of bear a lot of the cost for those services. So just helping remember that and helping our visitors remember, hey, there's seven or eight hundred of us living here paying for water and sewer and trash. And there's three million of you and we love that you're here and be patient when things don't happen as quickly as you hope for. So um, that just really stood out to me from the business summit. Um, there's a lot of potential for turning those visitors into sales however we can. All right, uh, San Juan Regional Planning Commission.
Uh, Jim, I don't know if you're able to attend. They did a fun offsite that I was unfortunately not able to go on an adventure with.
Yeah, we, we took a field trip. That's what they call it now. It's awesome. We did a site visit. The uh Overland Estates, Lloyd Schwartz. It was Tuesday, the twentieth of May. Uh, we departed the courthouse at four, got back around seven. Walked uh one ten out there, up and down both sides of the road, climbed to the top, went down at the ravine. Um, twelve sites. Looked at the uh, uh, positive progress, some of the pitfalls that he's uh experiencing with regards to water. Um, overall, it was fantastic. And I think site visits, field trips um really provide a much better perspective than. Sitting in a boardroom or in an office uh having these discussions. So I was very happy to have it. Uh, the entire team showed up. It was terrific.
Thanks, Jim. All right, any questions on that one? Okay, okay, and Benita Peak Planning Group.
I am happy to announce that the town has received their check from the EPA for the traffic impact fee. We received about a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Uh, and that will go into our streets fund that was created separate from the general fund to save for improvements on our green street.
Can you say that number again?
Hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Way to go town board implementing a traffic impact fee in a very timely manner.
Thanks, Anthony Edwards for helping on that too.
We need people to be paying attention to these kinds of things and helping us pass the policies we need to see happen. Thank you, Gloria. Um, and we don't, I, well, from what I understand, we don't anticipate quite nearly the level of trucking this summer.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, it's not hauling in dirt as much as we were both.
Hey, any other questions on that one? Good, okay. Uh, Jenna, item ten, open discussion, future agenda items.
So I do have a request for a Silverton Housing Authority meeting on Monday, July twenty first. But we were given news that we might need to have a, one a little earlier as well. Um, so we're hoping to have, um, as of Friday. Um, the nine unit town home project is fully funded.
Did we ring the bell? Did you ring the bell?
We're gonna, we're gonna have Ann ring it on Thursday.
Okay.
So when y'all hear it on Thursday morning, that's a celebration. Um, and so we are requesting a housing authority meeting on June thirtieth at five thirty PM. To set the guidelines for the application process.
For potential.
That is the first question we get when we announce this. When and where do I qualify?
Yeah, that would be at five thirty?
Does that work for everyone? Online, excellent. Okay, and then, um, and then our second one is the request for Brownsville Affordable Housing and Animus River Corridor Work Session. Um. And Housing Authority Meeting on July twenty first. Booking these out kind of a ways, but.
Appreciate that honestly.
And that would be again at five thirty?
Yes.
Yeah, on July twenty first.
Well, oh, at five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
So five to five thirty would be the Housing Authority Meeting and then. Um, and that'll finalize some other stuff and then um Brownsville would be the next one, so.
Okay.
I'll be on Zoom. I'll be out of town, but.
Okay, so Housing Authority, you're adding one, not take, we'd still have the one on the twenty.
Yeah, I'm adding one.
Yep, okay.
We need one a little sooner.
Doing the Kendall race, so I'll just look and all sore.
Oh, is that on the?
Good for you.
Okay. Um, I had a couple of things for open discussion. I just wanted to give a shout out to Lisa Merrill and a bunch of volunteers who did trash cleanup over by the transfer station. So again, talking.
Thirty-seven bags.
Yeah, in a couple hours. And it's wet and gross, like, that's Wetlands area. So that was a pretty nasty trash cleanup. Um, so just shout out to Lisa and team for doing that. Um, again, for folks that are worried about trash, there's lots of ways that you can help. Um, and so I also want to put a shout out that we're scheduling a town cleanup day on June twenty first, that's Saturday. Partnering with the lovely ambulance association from ten to noon. Folks can start at their house. They can show up at the carriage house and pick up bags and gloves. And then town staff will be driving through and picking up the bags. And if you come back to the carriage house um at noon, you can get a hot dog and chips. Um, yeah, and just, you know, again, kind of on the subject of trash, I know it's been a very hot topic online. I think first, just encouraging community members, let's all be kind to each other. When we're all really grouchy with each other. It doesn't give a very good vibe to any of us or to our visitors. So it's not really a very good pro tourism message when we're all snarking at each other. And um while the social media posts maybe could have been worded a little bit better, we still have an issue with trash, right? And how we pay for it, how we haul it, how we collect it. And it goes back to that point of eight hundred ratepayers paying for four million visitors. And we do have substantial sales tax, but like that doesn't always directly fund our trash and our water and sewer. And so we're always exploring ways where we can more effectively collect trash. How about we reduce some of our trash? Um, and despite popular narrative, the town does have. Um, and despite popular narrative, the town does have trashcans all over town. They did not disappear. There are bear resistant trashcans all over town that you can use. We still have a dumpster out at Whistlestop. And the real tricky part is camp trash, right? Um, the RV parks, all the camps in town pay for trash because they're in RV parks. And so the trick is for backcountry users and folks with the camp dumpster. And everybody will see an article going out in the paper on Thursday with some facts and figures. But that dumpster costs us $18,000 a season. That's not pocket change, right? There's a lot we can do with that. And so we have to just continually think about, how do we help the folks pay for the trash that generated? How do we subsidize it? Because it is, we're our hosting visitors. Um, and so those are future conversations, but all the trashcans in town did not disappear. There are places for people to dispose of their trash. Um, and we're continuing to deal with how to deal with backcountry trash, especially as the federal lands are less staffed than they were before. So if you care about this issue, San Juan Mount Association has trail cleanup days, trail workdays. You can pick up trash, you don't even have to go with anybody, just go pick up trash in the backcountry and show up to the town cleanup date and put all that pent up energy to good use. And I also have coffee with the mayor tomorrow. So if you really want to get into it, come meet me for coffee at 8:30, I'd be happy to listen. And maybe we should walk around and pick up trash though. With our coffee. And we'll make sure to throw our coffee cups in the bear resistant trashcan. So join me for coffee at 8:30, check out the article in the newspaper on Thursday and pick up some trash. That was my, that was my piece, um, and I'll be sharing more updates on the Wildlife Coalition and we could also come get them to present too. It's on my list.
And again, I I don't think that post truly captured, you know, entirely why we are removing that dumpster, um, and the other solutions, like the dumpster at Whistlestop. A potential grant we may get to have an attendant potentially at the dump. Um, and, yeah, I mean, again, all the like visitors coming from the train, if you get coffee, you can dump your trash in town. If you're staying at RV Park, there's trash there. If you're staying in a hotel, there's trashcans there as well. Um, this truly is just for the backcountry, um, campers, which is, which is an issue too, that we are working on solving, so. Just wanted to reiterate that.
We still got the one at Whistlestop.
We still got the one at Whistlestop. And all you 3 million people, we want you here, come and visit, buy a coffee, buy a T-shirt, go camping, don't shop at Walmart, shop locally, buy your stuff, generate your trash locally and spend your dollars locally and dump your trash locally or take it with you, that's okay too. Again, more trash talk, feel free to come chat. Um, any other open discussion ideas, agenda items? Well, Jim, you're just laughing at me, that's okay, that's why we're good at this.
I appreciate your comments about keeping things respectful. I mean, I think I counted with what, three comments on trash, um, tonight? And but the the internet can feel like exaggerated sometimes. And so cooler heads prevail, solutions oriented thinking, which is what I appreciate about Gloria and this board.
Great, thanks, Letsy.
Yep.
Awesome, and if you want to think about how we've invested in our visitor experience, go visit our beautiful bathrooms and showers. Pretty big investment in our visitor experience that really, you know, amps it up. So I think there's lots of ways that we've invested in our visitor experience and we do value our visitors despite what some folks online say. So don't listen to the haters, come check out Silverton, book your vacation, book Kendall for a wedding, it's beautiful, the deck's done, we're open for business. All right, um, agenda item 11, public comment. This is the ending public comment. So if you have anybody in person that would like to make a public comment or anybody on Zoom that would like to make a public comment, please click the raise hand button. Do you have anybody in person who'd like to make a public comment? Okay, um, go ahead online, we'll promote you to panelist.
Hey, everybody, I bet you're tired of me. Um, on the trash issue, I don't Facebook, but what I saw was not from town. It was from some other place in Colorado and it got pretty hysterical. But, um, I think that you need to ask local people what they would do to start solving the trash cost. And one of the things you have already done is when you ask for opinions in one of your meetings, and Jimmy Loki gave a very good opinion about what used to happen, I believe, in Grand Lake. And, um, so I think that that's something else you need to put on the listening list. You need to listen to people and see what they think. Um, and this is for the board members only. I have a feeling that, um, maybe you're not tuned into what people are actually thinking about certain hotspot items. And maybe you just want to start chatting with people around town. What do you think about this or what do you think about that? I understand that no board member is supposed to have knowledge of something the others don't have. But I don't think just chatting with someone for, um, an opinion on this or that would be a problem. And if you ask in a nice way, you can keep it neutral and good luck.
Thanks, Melody. Maybe we need someone to start a trash coalition. That's the next step.
Well, it's not under the, it's under the Public Utilities Committee.
But what to do citizen, you know, citizen engagement around trash, yeah, we have this great ordinance written by Simmons.
Yeah.
Sorry, he has solutions.
Yeah.
No, not util, yes, the Utilities Committee with policies, but have, yeah, yeah. All right, thank you, any other public comment on Zoom? I don't see any, all right, we'll close public comment. And we are going to entertain a motion to go into executive session. I'm going to give the board a five minute break, so we'll reconvene at 8:09. Um, and we'll, that'll give time for anybody online to log off. We're going to entertain a motion to go into executive session shortly, but I'm going to give. That okay? That works? Okay, so we read at the end of the regular meeting, okay. Go ahead.
Yeah.
All right, I will now entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Salute.
Second.
Hey, roll call, please.
Christine Harson?
Yes.
Sweetfield?
Yes.
Lucy Stifter?
Yes.
Lucy Gardner?
Yes.
Lucy George?
Yes.
African Harper?
Yes.
Eric Riker?
Yes, and I'll note for the record that this is a request for executive session pursuant to 24-6-4024B CRS. Conferences with an attorney for the public entity for the purposes of receiving legal advice regarding the district case number 2024 CV1 Appeal of Quasi Judicial Decision Inverse Condemnation Regarding the Silverton Square Building. We had roll call, the motion carried.